This is five o'clock. This time of the work session seriously discussed for Monday, April 16, 2018. The board, please. We have four. Item three, write-ins for review and discussion. Item three A is an item from the Community Development Department. Three A one is a presentation of the proposed project on Starbuck Drive. Mr. Edric Harris, Presquid Development Company.
Mayor and Mayor and Council, Mr. Harris is here to talk to you about the proposed development on property on by Mr. King's church and to answer questions and try to provide you some information on the how the long-term lease that's proposed works and answer questions that we may have regarded that. And Mr. Harris is here.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for the opportunity to come in and give you a little bit more information about the property we're proposing. I think it's kind of at least working the high-oated horizon of apartments. Of course, this development is targeted toward seniors, 55 and older. We're looking to finance it through the Georgia Department of Community Affairs Tax Credit Program. And of course, I know many of you have visited some of our properties and have kind of done a little more research on how the tax credit program works. It is a highly competitive process to gain funding from the state to facilitate the development of a development such as this. And the application deadline is May 24. During that time, you know, we're working to essentially compile an application that scores. And unfortunately, we can talk about scores and points as I talk about this, but at the end of the day, there will probably be 80 or so applications that could go into the DCA. And about 25 to 35, you know, amount of funding available, we'll get them in. So what we're trying to do is to position ourselves to be as competitive as possible. And one of the reasons we're here is because this site scores extremely well. First, because of your period housing team. Of course, they've targeted this area through the redevelopment strategy, through the redevelopment plan. Those are some of the initial components that you look for to do a development like this. Then just with the great city period, there's all the different amenities and things that are here that also score points. And then one of the questions that most of you have is we've talked about a ground lease. So I'd ask you the hot topic of how we do that. And there's still some, I guess, kind of questions left unanswered that we still need to figure out. But at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is is to basically place the property with a city entity, the housing authority or some redevelopment authority, that can hold the property. And the new development entity, which would be Presquid and the church, would actually ground lease that property from that entity, and that guards a point. And I know it says one point, but unfortunately, I've been doing this for about 15, 16 years now, and one point makes a huge difference. I've lost deals over one point. And anytime you can find a way to gain a point, you try to do it. We do have a backup plan. And for some reason, we can't figure out. At the end of the day, I know there's two goals. One, we've got to protect the church to make sure that the property at the end of the day goes back to them. And then, of course, protect the city to where there's no liability on the city for holding the property. So that's, I guess, kind of where the attorneys come together to figure out how to make sure there's indemnities for the city. And then, of course, at the end of that 65-year period, that it transfers back out to the city to where you're not holding it and responsible for it. So those are some things that we still don't have an answer for yet. We're trying to get the attorneys together to resolve that. We've kind of set an internal drop date at the end of the month. I know we've got hearings starting on the first for rezonations and things like that. If we can't figure out how to find a way for the city to hold it, to guard that point, we decide to de-just ground lease directly from the church and go away without that point. I think we're still competitive, but that point could make a difference if we're able to move forward now. And so with that, I'll, you know, kind of open it for questions. I can dive into further detail if you want.
What did you tell me?
How many units is that company?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
Yes, sir.
Do you know the rent?
The rent, um, it is average, I think, of 685. And what I can do is I can send those rents back to you to guarantee, to support what we've preliminarily submitted to DCA. So I'll email that back to the city to give you that exact number. I think it's an average of 685. And some are lower, some are slightly higher.
Is it rental, not purchase?
That is correct. It is rental. I will say, so Presquid will be and the church will be a long-term owner. At a minimum, we have to own for 20 years just to be in compliance with the state. But of course, there's provisions in there to where the church will be the ultimate long-term owner of the property.
What year did you say the church was on, 65?
The ground lease will be for 65 years, which is required by Georgia DCA.
And then it reverts back to the church?
That would be the intent, is that the land then reverts back to the church and they will own it without us.
As well as, as well as improvements?
That is correct, as well as improvements. During that six firsts, 65 years, we will own it jointly with Presquid as a lead, with the management company, et cetera. But then at the end of that 65 years, it reverts to the church, so.
Does the state have any of the 65-year off lease for 65 years?
Do they have any there in that period? I'm not sure. I'm not aware of any there.
I don't think this program's any existence with the 65.
Right.
It's a relative new program.
So the information that we got today, and going back to look at the threshold section of the appendix to the QAP, talks about a minimum term of 45 years. So are you proposing an additional 20 years?
So there is a little bit of disconnect between, I think there's something with the state code or state statute with ground leases and DCA where our attorneys typically advise that it needs to be 65 years. And of course, that can be hashed out between the terms. We're fine with it being 45, but there has been feedback given to us. We actually did one with the Fulton County Housing Authority last year. Those same provisions were in place for 45. Unfortunately, I can't remember exactly why, but we had to do it for 65 years with something where a state code overrode some provisions in the tax credit code, to where they don't quite match up with what's in there.
And it's my understanding as well is that if, for some unknown circumstances, Presquid went out of business during this term, the city's going to be held liable for all the terms and conditions of the contract for the remaining time, I believe. That's what I, what I've read.
Well, actually, so the way these are structured, we have right now set up the SunTrust would be our, they have a SunTrust Community Capital Partners. They would actually be the majority owner of what the tax credit program works. And it's in there for that because we're giving a tax credit to corporations to basically put in equity into these developments. And so those corporations have to be protected. So if they personally goes out of business, what happens to them? So there's really two or three layers in there. And the first layer is that SunTrust would be the owner. If Presquid and the church fail to perform, SunTrust is the ultimate owner. And they have to operate because they're obligation to the corporations that provide the tax credit.
I have one, Mayor. My understanding, I'm taking up from these regulations, is that the city or a housing authority has to be the owner of the property.
That is correct. And that is what we're proposing, is that the city would actually own it. The church would transfer the property to the city, but it would be a simultaneous transfer, so that there is no liability.
Simultaneous transfer between what?
Between the city and the new church development entity to control the property and development. So it would be a ground lease that we would take on, it would be a simult, like I said, so assuming that the city maintains ownership or acquires ownership at that same closing table, the ground lease would be signed and basically indemnifies the city of any liability.
But that's a lease, right?
That is correct. That would be a lease. So you know, the city would be the owner of the housing authority.
Exactly. Plus, it also says in what these regulations, my understanding is, is that if something happens over that 45-year period or whatever, the owner is responsible for assuming all the operation requirements of the tax credit program.
I think the owner is referred to as the owner of the tax credit development, not the owner of the property.
I don't believe that's what DCA says. I think they talk about who the owner is. But even, but even if you are at the leasehold, even when you deal with SunTrust, 15 years down the road, your company's gone, SunTrust is gone. How does the city avoid being stuck with the project?
There's no way to say, if you, if you want to take everyone out, there's a doomsday scenario. We've got a bigger problem than, than our development. However, if that is the case, I mean, if you go to a doomsday scenario with SunTrust being gone, Presquid being gone, yes, it is left as a development to see here.
Okay. Have you talked with the period housing authority or any other housing authority to see if they are interested in being involved in this project?
So we've had initial conversations, but not from the ground lease perspective. We've talked just on the surface of here's the development. They support the development, you know, as part of presenting to the period housing team. But trying to figure out the ground leases, probably been the last two or three weeks since we've been trying to figure out, can this be done? Which is why I prefaced the start, just by saying, if it looks like it can't be done, we've kind of given a time window, really like another week and a half, and then we'll just go to write a ground lease directly from the church. But of course, if you take it back to, if it's the overall goal of revitalize in that area, here's a great opportunity for a $10 million investment, and that point is important. But if we can't do it, we'll go the alternate route.
But help me understand, the first piece is that we would have to initiate a purchase with the bank, I mean, with church?
Correct.
To actually buy that for some, and my understanding is, they want to sell it. I mean, they want to sell it as whatever the land's worth and all that.
Well, so there's, it's kind of too close. There's a nominal amount that the church wants to get out of the transaction. And so what we've done, as a way of getting them funds for the transaction, they're a part in the development deal, so they'll get developer fees. So in lieu of a payment for the land, they're a long-term owner, a long-term partner, receiving developer fee and cash flow from the development in lieu of a ground payment, again, to try to facilitate making this happen. Because unfortunately, if we're here this time next year without a tax credit award, there's, there's no scenario that, you know, it would fit any of the parties if you're looking to really receive a land transaction.
I guess legally, can this council commit to a 65-year agreement? I don't think that legally we can.
I mean, I would agree with that, but I would have to look into it further. I would expect if DCA is proposing this, and there may be some way around it.
Well, they're not proposing. They're just saying that you can have a ground lease.
But you're asking, I mean, from a legal perspective, I have significant concerns with the city becoming the owner of this property in which the project is taking place.
Give me the legal witness.
Not easily led, apparently.
Any other questions, Council? Harris, what is it that you need from us? What is the specific request?
Well, the specific request would be support for the rezoning. Because it sounds like the ground lease is dead in the water, so I'll, I'll take, take that back.
And maybe a part of our concern is not legal.
Okay, understand, understand. Okay, so.
And there's no reflection on you, that there's a certain things that Mayor and Council can't do.
Correct.
Under our understanding of the law, unless our legal representative tells us something like that.
Okay, all right. So with that being said, then we receive the support during the rezoning. And I know there's some other requests, and I don't know appropriately how the hell I know with, you know, we've got the housing team, and we need big support and things like that. But it's the overall support of development.
I'm going to be the very bad news again, that the city can't take a position on any point coming before one of our subgroups like the planning and zoning, simply because we are the body that can, that will handle any disputes or hearings.
Gotcha.
So, so we can't ethically do that.
Gotcha.
Because of the process that we have, if you were to dispute a finding of a plan and zoning, they would come at some point, right? Good. So I think that the project's fantastic. I hope you're successful in doing that. I can't put that writing as great.
All right.
That makes sense.
All right.
But, but I, is there anything specifically that's bad?
No, I think that's it.
Counsel, are there any other questions? So.
I can thank you all.
Thank you very much.
All right, good night.
Item three B?
Yes. There's a group from First Baptist Church, and probably I'll go in for some of them. They're not in good condition.
Okay. Do that before we move into administration. Or somebody go get Mr. King and tell him he can come back in that car. Whatever you want to be. We have a group from First Baptist Church, through which is to represent, Council.
All right, yeah. Appreciate the opportunity. Just want to share briefly about a safety concern that we have, and let's see what would be the possibility of helping us resolve that. Major Committee with, with our property orders, First Street, on the other side of First Street, we have a parking lot. We have Carroll Alley, and that's coming out, and there's some green space there. Our children regularly use that green space, they order there for recreation and so. And we are currently in the process of putting a fence around that, it's pretty much the kind of, so when it's rolled, get, get there, we're currently installing it now. But we still have safety concerns with the traffic coming through. And so what we were, we're asking is that can we have a painted or whatever it's going to be crosswalk from First Street over to the other property, right there close to the green space, you know, either on either side of Carroll Alley, you know, coming across there. And maybe three signs, so that people coming, whichever direction they're coming, First Street, you say, you know, children play, or slow down with kids, or it's got to say anyone on Carroll Alley. We've had, had concerns for some time about just safety because of traffic coming through there. I would say much recently, we had somebody come through on Wednesday, or a ditch or out there, and this speeding through there on First Street and not paying attention because we had kids that was grabbing before they ran the street. And so you have, you know, there's another concern, you know, yes, we're putting up a fence, yes, kids, you know, have to learn how to cross the street. But you know, and I know, sometimes kids want to go from the middle, when they're trying to crawl, you know, it's like urping at sometimes, you know. And so we're putting up a fence, we'd like to have some kind of crosswalk, you know, with the, with the yellow colors and stuff like that to get attention, but also some signage that would encourage people to slow down because there are children there. So we're not asking to close the street or anything like that, but we feel like it's an important safety issue that the city may need to take out as well.
Counsel, do you see any issues in painting the crosswalks? Like the question?
You're talking about one crosswalk. Yeah, and I'm, you know, like, here's, let's say this crack is Main Street, this is Swift Street. Carroll Alley comes here, we'd like this crosswalk either, either right here or right here, because the green space is right here, so be it in the middle of the street, I can cross there.
Well, don't we have the same thing on that one Main Street? Where at the Methodist Church, there's two crosswalks, aren't those painted out, or empty?
I think there isn't. So that's what we're asking, that and some signage, to caution, kind of signage, something.
I think we mentioned maybe if we could get two crosswalks, one for crossing the parking lot, because we have seniors also that walk across from the parking lot to the church sometimes, and we need one right there by the parking lot, and they were probably here too often.
Are you talking about one up here by, by Main Street, this one? Oh, okay.
There is, there is one on, it's not painted very well, but there is one down there. It could be repainted and it'd be great. But then there is not one on the Main Street side at all.
Apparently, they're also, they're saying this as well, is our parking, we have a parking lot here crossing First Street, and, you know, we've done a lot of development and work with the class, and sometimes we park there for some days.
You're not saying like one going across Main Street, but one going that way?
Yeah, both of those went across First Street. Or not the straight up First Street.
First Street.
Mr. Wood, is there a minimum requirement between crawl, requirement in the licenses that have a certain distance between crosswalks on the same street?
I'm not aware of one, but I can check on that.
Mr. Gilmore?
I'll take your line from the previous speaker. I do not think we should do this at all. We've already talked about this one time on this crosswalk, and it's a consensus, Council, not to put one in because of exposure, having to do the ADA requirements through the sidewalk. Administration recommends to Council that you just abandon First Street. You know, the church owns all the property on both sides of First Street, and it'd be much more effective for the city just to abandon it, that property goes to the church, then they don't have to put the fence in if they don't want to, they can do whatever they want. Seniors can cross over from the parking lot wherever they want, not just up where the sidewalk is. Everybody with me? You know, but further back in the parking lot, they can have all their facilities all joined together, and we'd be out of there.
We don't, the city doesn't own, I mean, the church doesn't own all that stuff, is it?
But every one of those parcels that the church doesn't own has access off another street. They do not have to use First Street, and most of them don't.
Yeah, you, no, I disagree with you. With period drugs is, you've got a sign that you cannot exit back out from Main Street. You're forced to go back.
It's a front street.
It's a front street. As well as any time fitness, you have to go over to Swift Street or you go out the back, but there's a back entrance there.
There is, there is a front entrance there on Swift, on First Street. You know, like, like years, years ago, here's Swift Street, the, there's an entrance here and, and our property starts, there's two entrances here on First Street. And I think what you're saying is pharmacy comes out here, and then fitness, a lot of people turn in here or work in this.
They, they both got a back entrance. And the pharmacy requires you to go out that way.
They, they start to turn around and.
And you can leave that portion out just as a drive or whatever, and block off the rest of it.
Oh, like from here.
Right. Okay, my, my concern with this, like we talked about, is putting in, well, let me, let's go back and talk about the crosswalk for the Methodist Church, okay? That crosswalk is there only because previous Council agreed to arrangement when it was redone with that parking and tree, everybody remember all that, if you remember before, when that was done on some of the improvements that went in there. That's why that crosswalk was put in, okay? You know, generally, I don't think it's good policy for the city anywhere to have these issues about crosswalks in the middle of the street. And, and the issue that's going to come up is initially, it's going to be the deal with Carroll Street. But then you just heard here, well, then there's another need for seniors crossing over, and then it's going to be a little closer to line up with something on the church. There's going to be one issue after another because of the church's involvement with, which is every right they've got, of course, their activities and their plans on both sides of First Street. So if the, if, like Mr. Jackson said, is the issue about providing, you know, back exit off coming for the drug store and that type of stuff, and that one little portion there could possibly get opened for it. But you wouldn't have the cross traffic, you're cutting through.
So when they come out to drug store, on the back side, they got to turn that bill, that's a turn bill.
Yeah. If you even go further, though, you've got, you've got Carroll Alley coming, coming up through there. And it's my understanding the Methodist Church is going to do some stuff just beyond where the Baptist Church owns, and you go end up with a dead end that you can't turn around again there, if you don't bring it out to First Street where it is now.
You're talking about Carroll Alley now?
Yeah. Well, you could, yeah.
You could close a portion.
Why, why not make the crosswalk, you've got Carroll Alley dead end, why not make the crosswalk at that, at that connection where you have got a corner, that would be a natural place to cross?
Counsel's decision. I mean, that, that's fine if that, if that's what you want to do.
I think the other one they're asking for is where you would normally have, where, where First Street lets into Main Street, you normally would have a crosswalk there at that corner.
Right. And we've already said we were going to do it, that was one of the directions that came.
My only concern is that on First Street, crosswalk could be nice, but you don't even, no people coming down that street on Sunday morning, I guess we need to, it has to be something, if we're going to allow it, it has to be something to curtail the traffic on the Sunday morning when they, after y'all went tonight, when you, by the time y'all using it. But that's the thing about that, and I mean, I don't know what the whole public would know about it, unless like you were talking about, there's a sign, let them know at this time, you know, the traffic has to slow down, or whatever, you know. I guess, I, if somebody, if Mr. Gilmore's there, I think that's something else to consider. We really, we really don't want nobody to get hurt on that street crossing, there's a crosswalk, and we don't want nobody to get hurt every time across the crosswalk.
But the issue came up previously on that.
Right.
Because that's, like I said, I remember, that was one of the original requests from the church, was to block off that street on Wednesday for certain times. And it was a determination of Council that, no, it was not going to do that, you know, as a public street, to block off it on a regular basis. The Methodist Church asked the same thing on Carroll Street, as well in the final block, we said no.
That's right. And talk about consistency, the administration also recommended with their request that you block off and close out that portion of Carroll. But the church was not interested in doing it.
I mean, if you decide to, to close a portion of that, I mean, I think we can live with that because that was a petition in the past, you know, we were just thinking, since we didn't feel like, our understanding is that Council was not in favor of that, so we know, okay, what's another alternative? What we did want to do is do nothing, you know, with the safety of the kids, you know, it's a concern to us.
Well, please note that the safety of the kids is a concern to us.
And, and I, I think that.
We're, we're trying to, what I want to do, what I'd like to do, and I know time is of the essence, I would like for Mr. Wood to put together a large map of that area with identification of exactly where First Street, Carroll Alley is, and who owns all of the property that touches all of it. And then that, that way, we can sit down and look at exactly what it is and where it is, and then run through some options along with the city attorney's opinion on closing of certain streets. With it, visuals to me is a lot, is a lot better.
Sure, yeah, I agree.
That way, it cuts down a lot of confusion.
I agree.
From, from that standpoint. So it's a consensus of Council to, to take this up at our next work session. That's okay. So we can, or tomorrow, we'll have that for you tomorrow, and we'll look at it tomorrow.
I just have basic concerns with us starting to close city streets, because I consider maybe five or six that are affiliated with either schools, that have those kind of problems, or churches, or gathering places, that, I mean, you could justify closing Northside Drive, I mean, you know, I just, I think we need to find other alternatives rather than starting to close our city streets, especially.
And, 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 property may change hands, development may change.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm thinking about. We've got both churches there that have, that both have interest. And I know the Methodist Church has got plans coming all the way through there, and so I don't want to limit their ability to develop their property the way they want to. Or the, or where we can, fitness may be redeveloped at some point, and we have some future problems.
I would still, I would still like to see.
I would do it.
Because even if you decide to paint crosswalks, or whatever, pay them, or do, you still got to know.
Well, we'll have it, our free counsel meet at five o'clock.
So what would you need from us, to be back or?
So we can, tomorrow, we'll have that for you tomorrow and we'll look at it tomorrow.
I just have basic concerns with us starting to close city streets because I consider naming five or six that are affiliated with either schools that have those kind of problems or churches or gathering places that, I mean, you could justify closing North Side Drive. I mean, I just, I think we need to find other alternatives rather than starting to close our city streets. Especially, and, 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 property may change hands, development may change.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm thinking about, we've got both churches there that have, that both have interest and I know the Methodist Church has got plans coming all the way through there and so I don't want to limit their ability to develop their property the way they want to.
Or the, or where we can, fitness may be redeveloped at some point from, we have some future problems.
I would still, I'd still like to see.
I would too. I would too. Because even if you decide to pay the crosswalk or whatever, pay it on, you should go over to that.
We'll, we'll have it, our pre-council meet at five o'clock.
So what do we do in front of the school, is that we back or, so what does that mean?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow at?
At five. That one will be upstairs in conference.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
On 3B, is the, in the administration, 3B, one is the naming of facilities. Mr. Billmore?
Thank you. Mayor, mayor and council, in your packet is a recommendation from the administration to name three or four of our facilities that currently do not have any particular name or utilities and to just name them after the streets where they're located. For a number of people, they refer to these locations anyway, and so we'd just like to recommend that wastewater treatment plant named Frank Centerfield Road, wastewater treatment plant, Woodlawn, water treatment plant is Woodlawn Dry Water Treatment Plant, Tucker Road is Tucker Road Water Treatment Facility and Main Street is Main Street Water Treatment Facility.
Counsel? Very good. Proceed.
Thank you.
What we did do is recommend rebidding the Legacy Park, Crossroads Park, Heritage Park. Mr. Billmore?
Thank you, mayor, mayor and council, in your packet is information from me indicating that for the crossroads and legacy park improvements, we had one bidder, there's been a whole series of issues with that bidder relative to getting a breakout of exact cost when our consultant has gone back and talked to the contractor about to define it, contractor comes back asking for more money. So our recommendation to you all would be to cancel that arrangement and council authorize going back out to bid for Crossroads Park and Legacy Park, but include it with the Heritage Park bid. The feeling is, we've made some adjustments relative to the park specifications, the Heritage Park is a big project and going back out will probably generate more interest than it just one project.
Counsel? 3B, three is called to an annual leave education reimbursement management system. Mr. Billmore?
Thank you, mayor, mayor and council, also in your packet is serious information which is a follow-up to your March 19th request, which was when the administration recommended to you to allow our employees, if they so desire, subject to a contract with certain conditions, that they could use their own annual leave to pay the upfront costs for education reimbursement, or the education reimbursement program. Your request was to go out and check and see what other cities in our group do on that. We contacted 16 cities which are in our paid, range group and we asked them what they did with their annual leave and I think as you can see with the chart, it's all over the place about what they did. One thing we did find out from this survey, which I think is a true compliment to mayor and council, is that our program we have, while not costing very little, is a very good education reimbursement program that we offer for employees. I also included another portion of an article from MSI Benefits Group, a large consulting, national consulting firm, talking about the value of higher education tuition assistance. And so therefore, unless there's some other questions, the administration recommends that you authorize an employee to use his or her annual leave, I tell you one episode, their leave, if they so desire, subject to a contract, to pay for the upfront higher education costs.
Counsel?
I've got one question. You pay on, choose not to use annual leave and it pays money out of your own pocket, they can do that through that?
Oh, yeah, that's what, that's what they're doing right now.
Okay.
This, this, you may remember, this came to me as an employee who talked about, the employee wanted to take advantage of the program but did not feel on a financial advantage of their income that they could pay that initial upfront cost. They remember our program is, is that if you sign up for it, you acknowledge the conditions of reimbursement, you know, subject to certain conditions. If you, if you leave the employment with the city, you have to pass whatever courses that you take and if you do, then the city reimburses you for your tuition book costs less whatever grant money or whatever you may get from it. So this would still work the same, the only thing is, is that the employee would be using his or her annual leave, which they would pay, to pay for that, that cost.
How would you document it? If I just sign my employee and I come in and say, well, I'm thinking about going to college and I'll win my check for my annual leave and then they go spending on a new car?
Well, there's two ways that can be done. The first one is, well, they're just out, you know, they've been paid that, they're out, they don't have the annual leave anymore, they're taxed for it because it's, you know, taxable income coming to them. Or we could have a deal about where if they don't use it, you know, within some reasonable timeframe, then they have to pay the city back. Just, just like if a city graciously pays for me to go get a master's degree, as soon as I get a master's degree, I turn around and I leave and get a better job, good for me because I have the master's degree, but I gotta pay the city back. You know, what they've reimbursed subject to whatever the time schedule is. You know, we've had a platform of employees who say they forgot or whatever, it doesn't matter, you know, and we now are going to garnishments after them and pursue them if they don't pay underneath a reimbursement plan. Do you have the same thing, you know, can we address that as well?
There is a contract, if the employee signs stipulating the purpose of the, of the files.
That's on the rebate, but this is not an annual leave. And we're talking about taking, oppose a different approach and giving them cash upfront with...
You can still have the contract.
True.
Well, if you have, we're recommending you have to have a contract that laid out the condition. Now, you did notice, I don't think did notice or not, but one of the, he was Woodstock or whatever, they don't get any of that type of stuff, they just call personal time, you earn it and you use it. I'm not saying to do that, but, you know, that's one of the other things.
Counsel, what's your question?
I'm glad we're going to have a contract number.
I'm really not comfortable with it because I've seen this done before and you go ahead and pay the cash and within the first couple of three months, the person needs time off and so then becomes an exception for time off because they use their annual leave for going to school and that type of stuff, so I, I have reservations about it personally.
One of the things, excuse me, I'm picking on one of the things, I think it'd be a situation if you want, I know they can't prepare with the base, but they call it advanced annual leave, you know, and sometimes people, somebody would, but just walking sand, that people run into a problem and that same time you've got an annual leave, same time you might get sick and can't finish school, then you took his money and sometime he, he wants to keep the job, not, you know, I mean, he might need some advance, but then either way, you still gotta pay, you know, when you get back on his feet up, get back well or whatever, the money has to be put back in, you gotta pay his, his annual leave back to him, send that out, have a friend of mine, he earned and burned and so when he got sick, he had to pay all this sick leave, annual leave back so he had to be clawed up, they got to stay out for a whole year.
Well, the other, the other thing with our current policy is if you don't have any annual leave, you don't get paid.
Right.
Quite plain, plain and simple.
That's true.
I can't, I can't, I don't think I should have to say, but I guess I do, you know, my assumption is that we're dealing with adults, you know, and adults are supposed to be able to plan out their things and all that kind of stuff. Well, you know, I mean, it's, you know, to me, it's getting to be kind of an issue about, well, everything's fine until something goes wrong and then somebody else has got to come in and take care of it for them. And that's not what we're talking about here, we're saying, you know, you're an adult, you make a decision, if this is something you want to do, then this is what you planned for it. So consequently, if you sign this agreement, those are the conditions you have to live with, number one. Number two, you get that annual leave payment, you'll be taxed for that, you know, because tax income coming to you, you know, and that annual leave is lost, it doesn't go back in, you don't get reimbursed for it later and see what we mean, all that type of stuff. If you don't have any annual leave and you have a problem come up or whatever, just like we have right now, then you're out of luck, you don't get paid.
I have seen some of those similar contracts where you have to have a minimum accrued annual leave of X hours and then anything over that is subject to this and that way it would leave you a portion of that problem if this were the case.
Well, but the other thing, legally, I have a question, is can we, if it's annual leave and we're willing to pay it out in cash, if I have a sickness in my family, can I come to the council and say, I want my cash, since we set the precedent of paying it for education? Or I got a down payment on a house and I got this approved annual leave which belongs to me and I'd like to have half of it to make it pay, I don't know how legally, where we can stand on it or if we start paying it out.
Well, isn't annual leave described in pretty good detail in the city policy when, about conditions in which it can be used, just in this modified, and I understand what you're saying, the, the dis-modifies the original informal.
Right.
Contract, if you will, and even though technically not everybody has one, but the personnel policies that govern the utilization of, of sick and annual leave and, and what we're talking about here is modifying it with another contract. But, but I do agree with your question, will that set a precedent if someone decides that they can do something different?
In my opinion, as long as this clearly spelled out, what the annual leave, how it can be accessed, what it can be used for, then, then that's, that's what it is, it's an agreement that somebody accepts the, the job of the city, that they're going to be bound by these policies. I think it's when you get outside of your policies and start getting loose with how the money's being handled, then you're starting to set precedents for outside of the policy uses for the money.
Can that be challenged?
Yeah.
Now, when I got this money, I understand that I was going to use it to go to school, but now I'm just so sick.
I mean, in my opinion, they can say that, but if they've taken this money and it's been, and there is that contract in place and they understand what the policies and procedures are, I don't think they've got much of an argument.
Well, if we decided, if this can, we do a training on this new policy so there won't be any doubt as to what's going on, they can't come back and say, I didn't understand what I was doing, because anything new, it needs to be explained to everyone. I'm seeing all the best with it.
I think the time to do that is when they apply for it.
That might be true too, but that, that would be the second time, I think, it needs to be explained. I think when we're doing updates as to what's going on with our, our employees, I think they need to have that as part of it.
Well, if you, if you were to authorize it, it would become part of the new employee order, that should be number one. And number two, a notice would go out to every one of the employees advising them that this is a benefit or adjustment that council has approved and there are certain conditions that apply and if you think you're interested, you need to come and check with the city.
How long would you have to work for the city before you'd be allowed to, even climb for?
It would be the same thing as what we have for the tuition program right now, which is you have to be past your probation period.
You also have to have a work warrant to recruit.
Thank you, that I was gonna say.
You don't have, you don't have any annual leave.
And see with the new probationary period being a year now, that, that will give them a good opportunity to look at that.
Remind me, how are you accrued annually or what, what we're talking about now, annually?
Crew two, groups. The first one is sick leave, which can only be used for sick, when you separate from the city and everything, you don't get anything, just, it's like an insurance policy that you have. The second is what's called annual leave, you accrue that based on a certain schedule, based on, you have the full-time employee in order to do it, it builds up and then at the end of your annual anniversary, if you have anything, there's a maximum that you can be paid out for it and if you have hours that go over that maximum amount on your anniversary date, then you lose it.
Use it.
Lose.
I say you can use it before, before you get there.
Oh, yeah, sure. Well, I mean, I got, you can use it subject for annual leave, subject to an okay from your supervisor. You, you can arbitrarily just decide you go on annual leave. Now, that, whatever that maximum is and we'll get you the schedule on that and everything, if I'm an employee and I leave at that time, then I'm paid out for whatever that balance is that I have up to that cap figure. And that already is your policy, that's been here forever and today.
Any other questions, counsel?
I don't think I would suggest that you think about it, you know, and decide what it is you want to do. I will tell you, if you are concerned about the financial impact this will be on the city, it's going to be just about nothing, because unfortunately, not as many employees take advantage of this program as, as could possibly should. But it is one of those items, just like when we pay, for example, like in police, if you have a degree or you get a degree, or our tuition reimbursement program that we have right now, it's one of those other additional benefits which in my opinion are incredibly important for us to have and keep working on in today's market. And the more of those type of things that you can have, the more favorable you're going to be for younger employees to consider coming and working for the city. Good or bad, you know, a number of employees, you know, coming in now who care less about whatever time system is 20, 30 years from now, it does not relate at all. What they are interested in is how much flexibility and what can I get out of the job, how can I improve myself in the shortest period of time? And this is another possibility for them. The other thing in all likelihood is that it is more of an advantage, not exclusively of course, but it's potentially more of an advantage for our employees who, at least currently, are at a lower income level coming in than the higher earning employees.
Counsel? This is the second time we've addressed this, you've gotten more information this time, do you have enough information in order to make a decision tomorrow night? If you want to sleep on it one more time, or do you want to wait another few weeks? Are you ready to have a consensus one way or the other right now?
Any other part of it? That means?
It would require a vote because we're setting policy. So do you, is it consensus of council, we're having on the agenda for tomorrow night's meeting?
Four.
Mr. Billmore, we make sure it gets on the agenda. Anything further? Thank you. On 3B, four is a follow-up on the Sinclair Station, follow-up on the Sinclair Station stabilization problems. Mr. Billmore?
Thank you, mayor, mayor and council, at your last work session, we provided you the information on the responses from the two companies that bid on second go-round on the Sinclair Station Rehab Project. At that work session, you requested to defer it until today to allow input from different groups, particularly the Perry Area Historical Society, and that's why it is here now.
Counsel, you have, you have the two responses for the publics, it's not up there, we had the two responses just to stabilize it, this from one company for $118,575, the second company was $131,500, and that's a stabilization only, does not count anything else.
Well, the clarification, I went back and looked at the bid, it's more than stabilization, it's, it's putting the total outside package on.
Okay.
Which includes a new roof and a new canopy and new windows and new doors. and new windows and new doors, which it secures the outside of the building, but not the electrical or the flooring or anything that the inside would require. I'm like you, I thought it was just stabilization of the building itself, but it's truly the removal of the back portion, stabilizing the building, putting a new roof on it, replacing the canopy with a new canopy, and then, like I say, redoing all the windows and doors as well.
Thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to address counsel?
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
May I ask to do this?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a need with this lot to meet these days. I appreciate you allowing me to come again. I almost went and decided, I'm here again, I'm back. But I want to address several points about that. I know that there's a recommendation to have demolition of the building, but the historical society feels strongly that we need to preserve that building. It is a historic landmark, and I'm going to offer the following as substance for that. To date, we have received over one thousand signatures from the community saying, please, save that building. In February, when we requested an additional ninety days, you granted it. And we asked for that amount of time in particular, because we knew that it would take some time for the proposals to come back in, and we wanted to wait until after the proposal for ends, so we would know what amount of money we were working with before we started the fundraising. So it hasn't yet ended ninety days, but we're going to ask for additional time anyway, because the fundraising has begun. Four days ago, we started with our funding page, and the initial response has been excellent. So we are very encouraged by that. Also wanted to point out that, as Mr. Walker said, we all received the same letter from Mr. Gilmore. And in that letter, you know, he had said that it was just a stabilization project. But it actually includes, as Mr. Walker said, new roof and new canopy and all new doors and windows. It would be a very nice looking facility. It is not presently nice looking, we would all agree with that, but it can be extremely nice looking. So what would we use it for? I know that's the next question on the table. And I have a couple of suggestions that I want to make. One would be, since there is going to be a legacy park there that will honor our veterans and members of the community, let's use that as a little mini museum to display out some veteran memorabilia or some glint and memorabilia. We would keep the building locked, except for events that would be staged in that area. An example of which would be cemetery tours. We are still giving cemetery tours, not as we did in the past, you know, where we had the students in the cemetery, but we did the tours through there, and we needed a place to stage in order to start the tours. We could also rent that space alone on that building for use as events, such as Christmas tree sales or perhaps the beaches, the beaches, you know, times to do what, to rent the space for vendors to use, not the building. The building would need to be to stay locked. So I wanted to ask you, what is your desire for our commitment? What are you looking for us monetarily to provide in order to preserve this building? We need to talk it all around.
Counsel? Any thoughts? All of it? Two-thirds of it? Half of it? I hope Mr. Gilmore has heard.
Administration understands the original discussion on this, when we had the original bid price of a hundred and thirty-one was half, which is a standard thing to do on partnership, right? Fifty-fifty. So in this particular case, in the recommendation, it'd be one-half of a hundred and eighteen five seventy-five, unless council determined that they were going to take some of the things out of what's referred to as a stabilization project. Now, the stabilization project is actually based on the recommendations that came over from the Main Street Design Committee to stabilize the building. You're not going to stabilize the building if you have a leaky roof, you know, that's fallen in.
Exactly.
You know? The issue about the canopy had to be addressed, because there are concerns expressed, let's get ready to fall down. And if you take the canopy off, then you're removing, at least in my opinion, one of the major historic aspects and important parts with the building. You know, we talked about the back portion that was used for, I believe, cooking, when Ms. Peggy was there, that was to come out. We'll take that out, you got to brick up, you know, the back. So all the, all those things are all tied to what is required to actually stabilize the position. Not necessarily make it nice and beautiful, though we certainly hope that was the case, you know, but just to have it stabilized on the outside. Now, if council deals, it's totally your decision about whatever level, if any, that you want to have. One of the suggestions, you know, about to be about renting out the space and everything, that's a possibility, but all the other surrounding area around that building is all going to be part of the Legacy Park. And my understanding is, is that that park is going to be similar to, for example, Rotary Centennial, where we don't do renting out that facility. That Legacy Park has got its own particular intention, which is to honor veterans and other outstanding citizens, you know, from the Perry area.
Also, this following up on that, the vast amount of discussion that we have about that area down there was basically for handicapped access.
Yes.
So you wouldn't want to limit your handicap access by having something that's going on there. So I don't, I think that would be difficult to do, because of the way that the park is planned that the building exists down there. I just think that's be aware of that.
We sort of have that at least. Observation, you see properties start making that commercial.
Before we were talking about half a million dollars to do this.
Yep.
This was drawn just for the stabilization. I just didn't remember that one. I remember that this was a half a million dollar.
Keep in mind, Mr. Hubbard, that's not addressing inside the building. And I'm not sure what all is going to have to be done in there as far as new electrical, to make code and-
Right, you have to do all of that. You have to do electric, new water, bathroom.
Eventually.
Yeah, eventually.
Eventually.
Huh?
Eventually.
It will not have bathrooms, there's not a room there that even address bathrooms, and so.
We're just asking for some more time.
How much time?
Nine minutes.
From today. Counsel?
We've also, I may have reached out to the Sinclair Corporation, and we're waiting for a response from them, and we're hoping for a rather sizable contribution from them.
Requested ninety days from the day for community to raise half of the hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for those victims. I think that's my strength, Mr. Gilmore.
I think that's right, but I would make a suggestion, ninety days, you see where they are, and then make a decision. See what I mean? Well, maybe they got to forty percent. Maybe they got sixty percent, but they don't want to give us that other thing. You know, because, well, particularly, I mean, you know, certainly most appreciative of the interest of the society and their willingness to contribute and recognizing historical site and willing to go in and do something with it. The other side of that is, is that it's important as trustees of the public money that council make the best decision, particularly in the long-term uses of what's going to be going on with the city and the downtown. So I think it'd be unfair for all parties concerned, assuming you all agree to the ninety days, as in ninety days, the society comes back and indicates where they are, and then you can make your decision.
They can say ninety days or sooner.
Or sooner.
Or sooner, right? My recommendation is you stick with ninety days.
I wouldn't want to look to the matter of days, but I wouldn't want to see any Christmas trees or whatever you say, usage down there, around there, because I think that'll take away from our vision as to what we want the park to look like.
That's what Mr. Walker was saying, it could be ready upon the end of the year.
But I could look to the matter of days.
Uh-huh. You okay with that? Would you die?
I know about it.
So there?
I'll be gone.
Best of luck. We'd like to see the hundred thousand.
It's no negotiation.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate your interest.
Thank you.
Item three D five. Needer re-please. Five, three D five. All right, three D five. There's a proposed meter change-up program.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, Ms. Kelly offers her extreme apology. She called me about bid warning with the hundred and one herself fever indicating she was not healthy enough. In your package, you had a proposed meter change-up program from Ms. Kelly. I hope you all had a chance to go through and take a look at that. There are two parts to that. The first one is, which I think Ms. Kelly does very well documenting the need for us to go in and start doing replacement of certain parts and upgrading the meters since they're coming up in ten years' time for Phyllis and Riley, we're here, and possibly Mr. Keen, who originally went out for this project and everything, but they're coming up on the end of their normal life cycle. And so they do have to go back and do check and go some type of replacement process. So we do agree that that is something that needs to be done. Relative to that, she is recommending to do it over a five-year period, which I think is a reasonable course of action to take and everything. She also had the estimated figure in there of what they're projecting right now. And then the second part of that would be whether it is contracted out or if we contract with ESG and ESG use their own personnel for that. The administration's recommendation to you all is that we go to bid with the specifications for that, and this is done by an outside contractor. And then ESG will be responsible for checking and following up, you know, relative to the work being done. I do not recommend that we add another contracted service with ESG, because my concern with that is, number one, if something happens and you get into the finger-pointing issue, and I don't even think that's good for us, although we never had issues with ESG, but that's what happens on these type of things. The other thing I'm concerned about is we get to the end of the period and we start hearing the crying and whining about we need to keep the same folks on and all that kind of stuff. And so therefore, I think the more effective way would be for us to fill out two bids for that service again. If you all concur with that recommendation, then we will start the process of going out for bid and doing the process. Funding for this can be done on our water and sewer fund over a five-year period. So it's probably going to be close to somewhere around about a million dollars a year then. Because the meters themselves are six hundred and fifty-two thousand just for the meter and then the installment. Well, we'll check it, we will go five years.
Well, that per year, this amount is what the heat is going to cost per year. It's six hundred and fifty-two thousand plus the labor to install and that kind of stuff.
If there is some issue, we will go to squash.
Counsel? You see?
No, I don't think we have any option, because we have a life cycle sentence there. The batteries are going to be, and so your system's not going to work, and so.
Plus integrity of the meter itself.
Yeah, it's gone.
I'm in favor, but I sure am in favor of getting a lot of bids, but bidders lately have just been eating my lunch.
That's the recommendation, this first one.
But not one or two?
Well, we'll get as many as people will give us, that's all we can do.
You advertise a bunch of people if they don't bid.
That's an option. Proceed? Anything else, Mr. Gilmore? Item three C is from the police department. Received a discussion of a parade and property rights application from VAS organization. You come in.
Sure, mayor, mayor and council. This is, in essence, a parade application for an event to be held on June third, which is a Sunday at nine eighteen, the VAS temple. Once you gather, road to park, and then walk about two and a half mile route, basically turning right out of road on the key, and then following three forty-one business until you get to Morningside, and then Morningside should ride on Beach Chapel and then ride on Key and back to road. They're expecting two hundred people, and of course, this is not a normal route for us, which is, it's the neighbors supporting them before this body. It wouldn't require any road closures and a single lane of traffic. We can support it safely, we believe, with three vehicles, a lead and a follow vehicle, and then one that maintains a cushion between the follow vehicle and incoming traffic.
She would be on the front of the left, though, what it's going to be. It goes down the three forty-one?
Okay, yes, the way it's drawn to show.
But I was thinking, we can't get to three forty-one.
Okay, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, it's all the same thing, yeah, okay.
That was fantastic, but you're wrong.
So it's really not, it's not a real pattern, it's not a five K, it's just a parade.
It's approximately about two and a half miles of walking. They're doing this for nature conservancy, the Dole, Nationwide, Plantability Trees, I don't know what the local nonprofit is, they are a nonprofit, and it's also saved.
Counsel?
Does this, in your opinion, affect any churches in their worship service?
I don't believe so.
Does it go by any churches?
I haven't personally ridden it, but I don't think so, and there'll be, you know, it's just they're just walking, there aren't going to be a lot of marching band doing that, so I wouldn't think so.
It'll go by Memorial Heights Church, but it should not affect them, because they'll be turning. We'll make it there afterwards, but I guess.
Yeah, crossroads, we can't, I'm in a corner, I'm here.
I would think there'd be a much above conversation amongst a group of people that are walking.
Counsel? You good?
Good.
Mr. Jackson? You're fine? Mr. Gilmore, anything to put on that? We'll do it. Mr. Gilmore, is anything under item three for items for review and discussion we need to address?
That's it.
Thank you. Item four, council member items, Mr. Jackson, Ms. Walker.
Yes, sir, I have one idea, thought, Mr. Bentley. Following up from the letter that Mr. Smith gave us last- Following up from the letter that Mr. Smith gave us last week relative to working on cars and things like that throughout the organization. On the second page, everybody knows that there was a whole lot of camaraderie built around working on that or being within a group. I would recommend that we try to find a way to perpetuate that and give the city manager the authority to set up, if you will, employee clubs with definitions of what facilities they can use and how those facilities can be used and within what hours. It could be, if, Chief Lynn, I don't mean to pick on you, but they might want to have a shooting team, you know, to be competitive. How would they, how would we allow them to use the rain if they had a group to deal with? Or if Mr. Taylor wants to have an automobile club and now many people can come and participate in that. They want to, you know, outside of work hours and we define that after the spray, you know, the city manager. I just think we need to find a way to accommodate them if we can. Even have, might have a fishing team to compete in the rotary fishing tournament. Right, sir. We've got those fourteen-pound bass out there in the lakes.
It can be fourteen pounds, though. Them boaters are hard to catch.
That's just a recommendation I'd like to lay with the council to think about.
Done.
I don't know what kind of action we will need to do that, but.
It's like, for to be back on, to get a discussion, I generally have a next one, if that would be fine. Counsel. We'll talk about it at the end of the day. Hey, brother.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Diana Gray.
Yes, sir. I would like to tell you all about the experience I had this morning as I went to work. The garbage truck had just come by. It turned my garbage can over. It was in the park, it was in the street. Garbage was all down in front of my house. So I saw them as I turned on Key. And I told them what had happened. And I said, I'm going to take a picture of it and I'm going to take it to city council. Unless y'all go back and correct it. Well, by the time they went back to correct it, which they did, it had already been gotten up by my wife. So I have a strong complaint against them. There's no excuse in it.
Is that today?
Huh?
Is that today?
Today. This morning at seven o'clock, five minutes till big fat. Thank you.
We thank your wife.
Hold on, I wrote.
Anything further besides?
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes, I'm sure we had a chance to see, but we have provided to you in your boxes the recommended FYI two thousand nineteen budget. And we'd like to offer a suggestion to get to you, we will tomorrow, a suggested schedule for your hearings. So you can take a look at that. If that, you know, works, then that's what we'll use.
Counsel, please bring your calendars.
We already have one. Do we anticipate the process will be pretty much the same, if not exactly like we've done last year and the year before that? Everything will try to be, as far as I know, oriented around your already scheduled meetings. Or is there something else you really wanted to do? That's general.
Mr. Justice, counsel. Next. That's it. Before hearing. Why are we having, I'm feeling hurt. I'm just feeling hurt.
Yeah.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, Mayor, Council, I do have one item to share. As you're all aware, last week, the ninth and thirteenth, was our spring cleanup week for the city. And it was very successful, as it always is. Just some preliminary numbers that I got from our sanitation crew that was very busy last week. Bulk collection, we picked up fifty-one tons of bulk waste. Just for your references, we usually pick about fifteen tons per week, so significantly more than usual. We picked up five hundred and fifty-three cans of paint and we picked up two hundred and twenty-seven tires. So again, very successful. You know, our citizens were able to get rid of some junk they had laying around. And we're able to make sure that it doesn't get dumped in the city somewhere. So it was a good, good week. And again, thank you all for your support on this. That's it. Thank you. No, sir.
Oh. Just to update you all, the city closed on purchasing Gray Union's property last Tuesday. So that's the last of the three two purchases downtown. Still one more piece for the city to take.
Ms. Ward.
Yes, sir.
Item five, or department head items. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this closing thing would be great because I know there's a bunch of employees just chomping at the bit for zoning law.
I think that'll probably be the biggest participation.
I did want to mention to you that this coming Saturday, the twenty-first, at eight thirty in the morning at Hathaway Park will be our spring neighborhood cleanup. We'll be working on Oldfield, hopefully both sides of, of House and Lake Road this year. We're partnering with the Houston County Habitat for Humanity and they're doing the volunteer, pulling in the volunteers. So look forward to seeing you all there. I actually, I think, the city's looking forward to seeing you there and hopefully it'll be a great event.
Thank you, sir.
What did you say, eight thirty?
Eight thirty.
Yes, sir. Chief King.
Hi, Mr. Humble.
Chief Parker.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I do have a couple of items. One, just to let you know that we did receive the check from the city of Centerville for the ladder truck in the amount of forty thousand dollars. And also, I sent all of you today an email about a firehouse subs PR event taking place Maven Night at two P M. They're asking for a R S B P by Monday, April twenty-third. And if you'd like, you can just let me know how many of you might be attending. And if one of you are attending, such as the mayor or the mayor pro temp, they do allow for a spokesperson to give a one to three-minute discussion or talk about how much the gear that we produce means to the city of Perry and our firefighters. And, but that would be available as well. So if you just let me know who would be attending, I'll let them know. And we'll look forward to being there. I'm assuming, I believe our gear should be in by that time and we should be able to take some of it with us to show off for the cameras and the news people that'll be there. So it looks like it should be a pretty good event. It's a regional type of event. There'll be some folks there from, I think, Macon that received a grant, also Warner Robins and maybe Centerville as well, so. But that was an email, so you can see that. But that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Lynn.
Nothing tonight, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Palmer.
Yes, one thing. All my stuff over. All right, so G Suites. It's time for G Suites. So I sent you all an email and put a memo in your box about trainings that we have this week. I know with schedules, that could be hard to do. If you can come to those trainings, they will be here in the council chambers. They are on April eighteenth and April nineteenth. If you can't do those trainings, please get with me if you feel like you need training on how to check your account and do calendars. It is basically going to like a Gmail. So if you've ever had a Gmail account, that's what, exactly what it's going to look like. I don't mind doing a one-on-one with anyone that needs it. It should be fairly simple, but it will, we will transition over this weekend. So one FYI is you will not have any access to your perry-ga.gov email over the weekend. It will be down while they're transitioning over to G Suites. Also, Thursday afternoon, you should get an email in your, where you check your email now from, I think it will be from like a Google admin with a link to click on it to set up your account. All you have to do is set up a password. Again, if you need help, Brenda can help, I can help, you know, Mike Baker's there, Com South are the ones helping us get, do this. So don't feel like you're often, you know, no one's here to help. We're here to help, so just let me know. But please get back to me because I want to make sure you all are set up and good to go on Monday. You know, we don't run into any hiccups. There'll probably be a few hiccups like there always are, but I like to prevent as many as I can. So again, you should be getting an email on Thursday afternoon with a link to set up your Google account. It should just be setting up the password. You're going to have the same email. You're still going to have, you know, name at perry-ga.gov. That's not going to change. It's just going to look different when you pull it up. It's going to be through Google and it's going to look like a Gmail.
Is there any timing matters of whether or not we actually do the link Thursday before you transfer over?
Ideally, you need to do it before Friday after five. If for some reason you don't, Mike said that, you know, they can go back and, and get it set up.
Please put an email, do this right now.
Okay, in the subject. High importance, okay. But if y'all have any questions, please don't hesitate to call me or email me about it. What I'll try to do is follow up again. Once I know the emails have gone out to everyone, I will try to follow up with everyone to let you know. Okay, this email's been sent. This is where you need to go. Let me know if I need to walk through it. I'm actually going to be gone all day on Thursday. I have the regional commission leadership that I'm doing. So I'm actually going to be in Villageville all day, but I will have my cell phone, so, you know, if you need to call me. But you'll have all day Friday to set it up as well.
So you said do it Friday, not Thursday?
Well, the email's going to go out at some point Thursday afternoon. I don't know exactly what time yet. But yes, you could do it Friday. It would be in your email on Friday to set it up. I'm trying, is there any other questions?
Questions?
Oh, and there is a webinar, sorry. Okay, so the training is a webinar. So, and it's going to be recorded. So it's something, if you need to go back and do the training, I can send you that link and you can watch it. It's two sessions and they're both an hour long. But if you're familiar with Gmail, it shouldn't be a huge learning curve. If you're not, then we can, like I said, I don't mind helping. That's all I have. Thanks.
Mr. Smith, is anything else you need?
Nothing further, Mayor.
You?
I have anything merely exciting. I do have, you know, I. Mayor and Council, some brief updates. You have not had opportunity, it's been a lot of work happening at Splash Valley. If you haven't drove by, swung by there, just take, I mean, at first glance, what threw me off was now that the pool has filled in, just how big that piece of property is. I mean, it really is, with the shrubbery and the chain link and all that stuff being gone, it's really changed the landscape. So the construction on that is going very well at this point, only what I can find. We've had a couple of meetings with contractors, schedule's looking good. There's no issues coming about at this point. So we're very pleased with what we're seeing. If you do see something that you have questions about, do not hesitate to call me at any time. We'll get those addressed. The other project update is the tennis courts. The county has completed their version of the work. What is happening now is decor samples and compaction tests. We should have those by this week. Once that happens, it goes out to bid for the final phases of construction. That one should not take that long either, once they get going. It's just a matter of getting it going once the bid goes out. The next event is a special event that will be coming up, is the art exhibit. It'll be grand opening on the thirtieth. You will be receiving a hard invitation for that, for that particular event. It's going to be on a Monday at six P M. Just an hour or two, the artist and his partner from the National Archives will be doing a lecture summary. And Mr. Jones would definitely like to discuss about the immigration experience of America after the Great Depression. It's going to be really interesting. We're really proud to have it on board. We'll be getting something in the mail on that.
Keep in mind, that's a work session. It's the Monday before the first.
That's true.
It's Tuesday the first of May. We might be here late.
Anyway, we can make that agenda real. When the artists were throwing dates at me, they're traveling and it was one of the best times to get them here. And when they asked the thirtieth, I thought that would be the week before. Blame the dumb director on that one. Okay, last event. We saw something probably on social media today for those who have Facebook. We are having a athletics appreciation dinner at Roger Park on the twentieth from six to eight P M. This is extremely casual. There are a lot of invitations going out for this. This is just something that, since I came on board with the city, it's almost free. This is just something that, done the past several ages I've been with. We've had some longtime coaches and parents that still volunteer and their kids have been gone and grown forever. This kind of a day, just going to have some food and pass some pictures of the seasons going on, just some fellowship and some thanks for, you know, volunteering your time and your efforts. We would love to see you there, but it's not one of these events where you have to get there. So if you, if you do decide to come, you'll see some big smiles and fun conversation. I think it's going to be something we try to do each year if we can, and we'll sit out guys. So I'll have any questions on the event. Thank you.
Is that?
Nothing.
Hey, aren't you? Okay. Our next meeting is tomorrow at five o'clock upstairs. It's a pre-council meeting. And then we have the council meeting at six in this room. Tomorrow as well. Mr. Gilmore.
I just wanted to leave a thing. I know we made a counter, but I recommend, I wish all have some objections, that we have an item on the agenda for tomorrow stating that the city is not going to be an older, of these property. There's a, this is a corporate option, but at least it addresses that issue. Okay. For, you know, the special president, we have talked about.
Okay.
If that, if that's agreeable with you.
Yes. Anything else? All right. Let's have that. Number four, time to continue your conversation with the governor.